Good evening. It's Tuesday, October 5th, and this is a regular city council meeting. Thank you for being here, and all those in the audience and those at home watching us. We do appreciate you taking the time. I'll bring the meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. David? City Clerk, roll call.
Doug Glasco.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Barbara Bynum and Anthony Rousseau are absent. All other council members are present.
All right, thank you. Can they change us to the agenda, David?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are none.
Is there any call for public comment? I don't believe we have one in the audience. Do we have one online? All right. Next item on the agenda is Item 6. Consideration of City Council Minutes for September 20. Regular meeting, September 20 special meeting, and September 21st special city council meeting. Could I have a motion?
I'd move to approve the minutes of the September 20 meeting and the September 21st special meeting as presented.
Second. All right, did we have, what, did you get all three of those in here? Did, all, all three of them?
All three. All three of the meetings.
All right. All right, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item 7 is a resolution. City Council consideration of Resolution 2021-21, setting November 16, 2021, as a hearing date for an annexation of the Grace Community Church Edition Number 2. Senior Staff Planner, Amy Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So this one you've seen before. This is the annexation schedule, and we just went over this in pretty detail on September 20th. So I'll kind of do an abbreviated version of that presentation, and if you have any questions on it afterwards, I'll be happy to answer them. This is the vicinity map. This is located along Woodgate Road, kind of across from the elementary school and just north of the current Grace Community Church. This is an annexation of a piece of property, as I mentioned, along Woodgate Road. As you can see here, it's completely surrounded by city limits. It's about 3.48 acres in size, and annexation is going to allow for future development and expansion of their church services. The zoning of the surrounding area can be seen on this map, and the proposed zoning for this property is the R3 medium-density district, which is consistent with the surrounding zoning as well. This next slide, this also in your packet, just describes what's allowed in the R3 zoning district, and places of worship are a use by right in the zoning district. Next is the annexation map. And then in our comprehensive plan, the future land use map, this is listed as residential mixed-density low, which does allow for a variety of uses, and as I mentioned, churches, places of worship are allowed as a use by right in this zone. This is located in growth area 1 in our comprehensive plan, which just means that this is the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow, and as you saw from the previous map, it is completely surrounded by city limits. An annexation agreement will be required for this property. The impact report will not be required as it's less than 10 acres, and we will be recommending approval at a future meeting of the annexation in the R3 medium-density district. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Questions? All right. Did we have any public input on that?
We did not.
Okay. I'll open it up for public comment, and we have none. In that case, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-21 as presented.
One second. We have a motion, second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Item 8 is Ordinance 2561 on first reading. City Council consideration of Ordinance 2561 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, repealing and replacing Title 4, Chapter 4, Sections 1 through 8, Part 4-4-1-18 of the Official City Code of the City of Montrose. Cedar Planner, Amy Sharp.
Great, thank you once again. So this one came to you before work session, maybe a month or more ago. We kind of waited because we wanted to do the building code amendment at the same time as they're both very closely related. This is in order to add a definition for family childcare homes, as well as update the definition for childcare facilities, and then define where these uses are allowed in our code. This code amendment is in response to House Bill 21-1222, which is attached and in your packet, which was signed on June 7th of 2021. This House bill expands opportunities to access childcare in family childcare homes, and according to this House bill, family childcare homes shall be treated as residential property use, and so we're updating it in our code to reflect the same. And that's all I have for this one.
Any questions? I do have one. Will they still have to meet state requirements for all the childcare facilities?
Correct, yeah, they still have to go through the state licensing process. They just, what's different is currently in our code, a lot of the areas, they're considered a conditional use permit, and so they will no longer have to go through the city for a conditional use permit. It'll just be a use by right.
Okay. We're going to hold a hearing on that. I'll open the hearing. Are there any comments? Chris, do you have anything? Anyone else? Nobody online? All right, in that case, we'll close the hearing. I would consider a motion.
Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance 2561 on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Our next item is Ordinance 2562 on first reading. Consideration of 2562 of Ordinance of the City of Montrose, repealing and placing, replacing Chapter 4, Section 1, Section 3, 4-1-3 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. Amy Sharp.
Great, thank you once again. So this one is similar to the one that we just had. It is also in response to the House Bill 21-1222. The difference is that it's just updating our building code requirements to reflect the changes that are needed. So for this one, they're changing building code requirements for various daycare, childcare, adult daycare, and residential group facilities, and it will change the requirement from five children to 12 children in the following sections that are listed in your packet in order to update and reflect the current, in order not to update the state law, but to reflect the current state law.
All right. Any questions, gentlemen? I'll open a hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Anyone online? All right, we'll close the hearing. I would like to point out, I think that we've, we've discussed all of these at work session to some detail, so I, I would ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to pass Ordinance 2562 on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number 10 is ordinance on first reading of 2564. Amending the zoning designation of Lot 1 and Outlet A of the Yocum subdivision and adjacent right-of-way R1A. Largest state district to B4 neighborhood shopping district. Senior Planner, Amy Sharp.
All right, this first slide shows the location of this property. This is located just south of Ogden Road and just south of Bridges Drive. This is called the Lot 1 and Outlet A of the Yocum subdivision. So this site is approximately 6.4 acres in size, which includes the two parcels as well as the adjacent right-of-ways. When we rezone a property, we typically like to rezone the adjacent right-of-ways as well so they all match up, and we don't have slivers of right-of-ways that are different than what the site, the property adjacent to it is. So this one is a request to rezone Lot 1 and Outlet A of the Yocum subdivision, as well as the adjacent right-of-ways from R1A largest state district to B4 neighborhood shopping district. And so I'll point out too that Lot 1 and Outlet A without the adjacent right-of-ways is 5.6 acres in size. This rezone will allow for future development of a neighborhood center as well as potential housing. At the last planning commission meeting, the applicant, which was David Coker, mentioned that his primary reason and wanting to rezone this property was to put a sales office there for his future residential property development that'll be going on to the properties to the south of there. So you guys have seen some of these come before you for preliminary plots way down to the south, and his hope is to put a sales office nearby where his residential housing development would go, and that's his near-term plans for this property. This is the subdivision map, or the rezone map, I mean, and it includes, like I mentioned, the two lots as well as the adjacent right-of-ways. This talks about our rezone criteria, which is found in our Section 4, 429 of our code. So we go over this in planning commission as well, and also note that when somebody rezones a property, we ask them to not only consider what could be done on the prop, or what the applicant wants to do right now, but what could be done on the property, like all the different things that are allowed as a use by right within that zoning district. So those things are considered when it's brought forward for a rezone as well. The proposed rezone, the B4 neighborhood shopping district intends to provide for retail shopping and services on a parcel of land that's no greater than approximately five acres of size. So that's why I mentioned that these two lots were close to that five acres in size, and it's a little bit larger than that because we're wanting to include the right-of-ways as well. In our comprehensive plan, this is actually listed as a neighborhood center, as you can see on this map. So this fits in nicely with our envisioned 2040 comprehensive plan, as far as what the anticipated use of this property could be in the future. Staff does find that this proposal meets the rezone criteria stated in Section 4, 429. It also meets the intent of the B4 neighborhood shopping district. It is in compliance with our comprehensive plan and compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the rezone. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this. I'll make note that they met, I believe it was August 25th, I think that's the right date, and then we actually did rehear it at Planning Commission a second time as there was a noticing error, and so both times Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezone. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Yes. I do have a couple of questions. I recognize that one of the criteria when we look at things is that we should, to the extent possible, approve things that are in substantial compliance with our comprehensive plan. But I have an issue on this one, because this one is clearly inconsistent with the current comprehensive plan. What I do have an issue with, I believe, and I need to be convinced otherwise, is the finding that this amendment is not adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare. Because knowing that area out there and what B4 use could allow under the current circumstances, I think there is a question, and forget, forget the road for a moment, but look at the right-of-way, the shoulders, the lack of sidewalk connectivity to existing sidewalks and trails. It's a long distance. And then I look at the performance standards for this particular zoning, and one is that all uses shall be easily accessible by pedestrians from surrounding areas and shall provide appropriate sidewalk connections to the surrounding sidewalk system. That, while I, while granted, it is a performance standard, I think to approve what we know, to approve this request tonight is inconsistent with what we know actually exists on the ground, and I think we would be approving something that is inconsistent with our performance standards. So now convince me I'm wrong.
Sure. So I would just say that any property that, you know, hasn't been developed yet, a lot of those things aren't going to be in existence. We're not going to have sidewalks on a parcel that's not been developed yet. And so when somebody comes before us next with their proposal to move forward with a project at that property, that'll be the time at which we go through and make sure that their development on that property adheres to all of our subdivision or site development standards, depending upon which he does. So if they do a subdivision there, they will have to meet all of our requirements for the things you stated, such as sidewalks and access and the roads. And same thing for like if he goes through and just puts in one building on that one lot for a business, he would have to go through our site development review, and all of those things would need to be added to that property in order to meet our site development standards.
And I understand that, but isn't it true that I could, if it were to be rezoned tonight and then on second reading ultimately rezoned, once that is approved, I have a use by right of all of the things that are listed in the B4 zoning matter, area? And so while I might have to meet all of the site development standards, if I did this a month from now, there is still no sidewalk connectivity. While I might be required onsite to meet all of the things I had to, we would not impose on the developer to install a, I don't know what it is, half mile of sidewalk or whatever in order to get their approval for their project. And so that is what I'm concerned about, is that we're perhaps putting the cart before the horse, and I'm not saying that it's not appropriate to be B4. I just think under the current circumstances and conditions, it's premature to approve that zoning. Because again, I said, I don't wobble with the comprehensive plan and what the comprehensive plan says. I do think we're not at that juncture yet where we can approve something that's clearly inconsistent with our own standards.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So first, on the use by right piece, so any, any development would go through the full subdivision process. So even though they have all those uses by right, those do still have the second tier. And this is a common conundrum, so I, yeah, I agree with what you're saying. It's, it's a very common kind of conundrum of development. So chicken or the egg? Do we build and, and build arterials that only, so right now, like Ogden, for example, is at, you know, 30% capacity or so, volume-wise. Do you spend $10 million to build an arterial without development, or put the pieces in place to kind of facilitate development and then work concurrently to build the arterial? So in this case, you know, you have this little five-acre piece, kind of, yeah, half a mile to three-quarters a mile from facilities. It's pretty unlikely that the city in that case, I mean, we could, and kind of the past model, a lot of times the city would try and do this, put, put that on the back of that development. So if they're going to go in and put in, you know, say, three houses on that lot at the low end or something, you know, technically, we could enforce them to acquire all of the necessary rights of way, which in this case are like, you know, six or seven different properties between them and the roundabout, and construct that sidewalk. What more commonly happens is the city recognizes the issue. As development hits kind of a threshold out along these arterials, works to concurrently try and hit those and get those done before you kind of cross a tipping point. So we're never going to be able to build an arterial for one customer, you know, but when you hit a certain point to where the volumes are high enough, you have a high enough pedestrian demand, that that becomes, you know, really high, good bang for our buck type project to, to bring that online, then a lot of times those are happening at the same time. So I think, you know, if they were to come in and want to do 100-unit apartment complex on this property tomorrow, the city would probably say the infrastructure can't support that, that's too many uses, you know, you're over this threshold. If they wanted to come in for two or three houses, you know, that's no different than two or three houses continuing to go in, and the bridges, which has a similar situation. Brown Ranch, even worse, you know, where you have these housing units that are appendages with, out the link in between, until they hit that critical mass that it warrants the investment to get to that point to where you're, we're comfortable with all of it. So it's, it is a conundrum, it's just where's that threshold of, of when it hits a tipping point to facilitate the development, if that makes sense.
And I, I appreciate that explanation, and I don't mean to sound argumentative. It's just that I, I do have some concerns about the prematureness of the rezone at this particular point in time. Another factor is if we were to rezone it and it were to be B4, it, not that I would suggest for a moment that staff would make an inappropriate decision, but it would be out of the council's hands at that point, once it becomes a use by right, and they can simply come in with their site development plan and ask for staff approval. And we don't know if we'll be here, and we don't know if you guys will be here when that occurs, but some approving staff member could decide that 100-unit apartment was appropriate without any, you know, further infrastructure development. So those are my concerns. Again, I'm not opposed to the B4 zoning. I just believe it's premature to consider.
One thing I would point out, I think, is also in our standards, that it, it asks for the developer to provide connectivity with the neighboring areas, but it doesn't say the neighboring area has to be three-quarters or a mile away. That's a little bit presumptuous, I think, to expect them to develop and connect to, I mean, that far away. But kind of in my understanding of where our standards are designed, is that they would have to provide connectivity with the neighborhoods that have sidewalks in them, which means that they would have to provide connectivity with the bridges. But the bridges, at the same time, they're in a special improvement district, that they are responsible for developing that sidewalk along the entire frontage of Ogden. Are we going to push that hard for them to develop that at this time? I mean, that's, that's one of those, if, if connectivity and pedestrian access is that important, how much are we going to push that? Because at a certain point, I think, we can say it's premature, but at what point will it be mature? Where is our bar for that? Where's our metric for that? Where are we going to say, okay, now it's appropriate to go ahead and zone that? I think I'd go more towards Scott's definition, that the rezoning of it and the development that are actually going to help us spur that connectivity, where we don't have a reason to spur that connectivity now.
And, and I don't disagree with you, David, all. I think my concern still goes to the health, safety, welfare issue of, are we potentially putting our citizens in a greater risk to compromise their health, safety, and welfare if a B4 development went in as a matter of right? And I don't want to put the chief on the spot, but I was just, be curious to know if the PD had any comments relative to the safety issue that I'm raising regarding the sidewalk connectivity and potential development.
While we're getting that, do they have to put a sidewalk across the front of this once, if it's approved?
Concurrent with development, the, the base minimum in the code is all frontage improvements need to be constructed with development. There is the ability to defer that if it's out in the middle of nowhere, so it's not uncommon that you have SIDs. The bridges was a good example. They put an SID on the Ogden Road frontage to be done at a later date, once you had enough mass to, to warrant it. But at the end of the day, the second layer of protection is health, safety, and welfare, and that's a staff-level job for, you know, if it's a subdivision, that would be coming from council, but if it's just a site development, yeah, the health, safety, and welfare, making sure that's maintained is at the staff's discretion, but it is still a layer of defense, just not at council's purview at that point.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure I understand your question, counselor, is that it's specific to sidewalks and pedestrians in relation to where the development is and the length of Ogden Road, so maybe people riding bikes, pedestrians up and down the, I guess it'd be east-west corridor versus bridges. Bridges has sidewalks. Is that, am I understanding that question?
Perhaps my question, yeah, is specific to that, but perhaps if you feel, feel free to comment or not comment, but if you have an opinion, not just related to sidewalks. I raise sidewalks particularly because it is stated specifically as one of our standards. But in a more general sense, knowing the conditions on Ogden Road, knowing the gaps within the sidewalks, if a B4 development were to go in with no further infrastructure development other than what might be required onsite, do you see that as a potential health, safety, and welfare issue?
I could see that if you had more pedestrian traffic on Ogden Road in that area, it does get pretty tight going up and down that road. I don't have the traffic accident or pedestrian accident data. I know that on occasion, we do investigate accidents on that road. It is pretty tight, but once again, I would think, and this is just my guess, that if it's a neighborhood shopping center, the neighborhood that would be served would be the bridges. I don't know that, I mean, just from thinking off the top of my head, I don't know that I would send my child down the, the east-west corridor portion of it. I would think that it would be mostly served from the bridges, which I would imagine would, you know, relay some type of crosswalk or, or something along those lines. I can certainly have our records department research the data for pedestrian accidents, bicycle accidents. We may already have some of that because of the, the bridges request.
That's true. We did have that recent one that included at least up at Bridges and Oak Grove.
Yeah. So we could get you that data.
Or Bridges and Ogden, sorry.
If you, if you'd like it.
If it's, if it's readily available, but don't, don't go there.
It actually might be readily available.
We just did that traffic study for the bridges. That included, so at least a snapshot, Bridges Drive and Oak Grove intersection, which usually intersections are where things happen. There was no incidences there outside of a DUI that ran off the road, misunderstanding some traffic control. And then, oh, seven years ago, there was a bike that was sideswiped by a boat carrying a trailer. They felt like it was, might have been aggressive driving, kind of trying to push the bike off the road, but accidentally clipped him, kind of thing. So I don't know if, you know, that's representative or not, but it's kind of a culture issue, but those are the things I'm aware of.
We did have a fairly serious traffic accident, but it was more towards the Townsend side. It would be down towards the Yocum side of, of that area. So I don't know if I answered your question or not.
No, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Amy, could you bring a shot back up that kind of shows where this property is located versus the entrance into the bridges?
I don't know. Yeah, this might be the best one. So it's right across from the Bridges Drive. And just, I don't know if this helps or not either, but, and it's kind of getting outside of the realm of the actual rezone, so stop me if I'm going outside of it, but we talked about, you know, this area to the south, this is all part of a greater subdivision effort for more housing, and this was done as part of an annexation that you guys saw recently, and as part of that annexation, they had to dedicate a right-of-way for future road extension. So Bridges Drive would come all the way down here to Otter Road. And so, you know, with all these developments at that time, that's when all those different road improvements, sidewalks, and all those things would come into play as well as, as the development occurs.
Well, if sidewalks are in the bridges, would it be feasible to consider having sidewalks put in as part of this development on this side, where we could maybe set up a pedestrian crossing, a painted area across there?
Yeah, definitely. So we use crosswalk warrants for crosswalks, and it's volume-driven. So we would, when developments occur, once they kind of stabilize, we go out and do counts, and if they hit certain thresholds, we would do a crosswalk, which is kind of works for both in this case, where if there's not that many people using it, then we obviously don't need it, and, and it doesn't meet those thresholds, but if there is a high pedestrian demand, then it triggers the, the warrants for the crosswalk, and a crosswalk will get put in. We don't want crosswalks just everywhere. People get numb to them, and you can actually create a higher hazard if they're not very often, or if they're not occupied very often, because people get used to just going through them, not even looking, and then it creates a false sense of security. So it's something we go back to standards on.
David, do you have any comments?
Point out is, the concern over the building, a large apartment building, is that with our right-of-way dedications and stuff, the Outlet A rezone, that one lot, the largest one, is 3.6 acres, I believe?
Five point six.
No, but they have a, they have a road, a dedicated road right through the middle of it, that they cannot build on a dedicated right-of-way, so that really is an invalid point to me. They only have a piece of property that they could build on that is 3.6 acres, 3.694 acres.
There's two lots. There's Lot 1.
There's one on one side of, one there's one on the other.
Correct.
The larger of the two is 3.694 acres.
Yeah, and the other is one point something.
Yeah.
I can't roll in when I'm in my presentation, so.
And I would... And I would direct this toward Mr. Murphy. Can you, you think you could build a hundred lot, a hundred unit apartment building on 3.6 acres?
We're looking at, there's actually one that's going in over on Locust that's three acres, and it was about 25 units, so, and that was pretty dense, so I think that's about the most you would expect on a, on a lot that size.
What, 25?
Unless you went vertical, which I think, I don't know what the height restriction is in that zone, but.
I think it's 35.
So that'd be two stories, so you'd be in that same neighborhood.
Yeah, so the most people, they would be able to put an apartment building there for is 35 units.
Correct.
Realistically, then still comply with all of our code. So they're not going to be putting in a 500 unit apartment building on that block. But I do like the idea, because right now on that, the entire frontage of that, that in kind of, what, what you're saying, Mayor Glassbell, is that by putting in or requiring the side of development on that frontage on Ogden, would give us that connectivity component with the Bridges, be able to put in a crosswalk there to kind of comply with our own standards.
Certainly, and that, I think that fits well into kind of how, what's happening regionally in this area. So, you know, even people at the southern end of the Bridges, we, we're trying to get the spine of our pedestrian network together, you know, East Oak Grove Extension, you know, the stuff on 6700, that missing connector between 6700 and Bridges Drive. So we're giving places for people to go and avoid, you know, being on a busy street, the Ogden-type situation. You know, Ogden, we have 16 some property acquisitions or so. So what's happening practically is a lot of people are going into that pedestrian network. So I think, you know, if I were, if I lived here and I were telling my kids to go to the rec center, I would probably recommend they go through the Bridges, because you'd have a dedicated pathway the entire way. So they aren't left without options. It might be a little longer in the interim, until the city can catch up and get the road built and get the properties acquired. And, and again, development facilitates a lot of that. So if we were to go and independently seek 16 different properties, you know, you're talking millions of dollars of acquisition and possible use of eminent domain, whereas if you, you know, kind of situations like this, you develop and get the property annexed and zoned, and get the right-of-way secured, you know, kind of one at a time, eventually you're pretty close, and that might be down to one or two, and, and your options get better. So, you know, we wish you could do it all today, obviously, but some of these things do take time, given the, the cost and land considerations.
Part of that dedicated roadway would include space for a sidewalk?
Yeah, so the ultimate build-out of Ogden Road would be the same as our other recent minor arterials, so like South Hillcrest Extension, where we have bike lanes, turn lanes, detached rec tra, or rec trail and sidewalk on each side.
And kind of tying in with the sidewalk development across that entire section of Ogden, I know it's not specifically related to this, but it is kind of tied to that since it's part of our discussion, we could possibly start looking at developing just sort of a basic idea map of what it would take to put in sidewalk along that frontage on the north side.
Yep. Yeah, so.
And then, the Bridges does build that sidewalk in, would at least have, have a little bit better understanding of what it would take for the city to continue that all the way down.
Correct, yep. So waiting for the ultimate build-out is, there are interim solutions beyond that. I sent that email a couple of weeks ago outlining kind of the, from the, you know, most straightforward or lowest costs to the, to the most robust, kind of going through, I think, three different options and the property acquisition applications. On the north side, it was really favorable. There was actually only one. And so, yeah, there are, that is kind of spelled out, and that becomes a tool, planning tool going forward. If, if we hit these thresholds where, because, you know, the name of the game is just trying to keep up with growth and development, and it's, it's not unique to this lot, it's every lot in town, you know, so 6700 Extension is a good example, where we're working concurrently to try and stay ahead of what's going to become a big pedestrian corridor with development going on, on three sides around that one. But in this case, you know, it lays out the plans, that if we hit that threshold, we know what the interim measures are and what those may look like, and what that entails to start planning for it, to, again, try and stay ahead of these things as they, as the growth occurs essentially everywhere.
If growth were to occur, is the owner of this property responsible at that point in time, and we want to start a sidewalk down through it, is he going to have to pay for the sidewalk, or is the city going to get stuck with that?
So kind of a, the city's gone many ways on this over the years. They used to put everything on the backs of the developers. We have a housing problem. You know, that was in a different environment, that was before, that was at the last bubble. We've had to partner in order to facilitate housing and try and solve that problem in town. The city has been a partner on a lot of those. So in a product like this, we would probably take care of improvements on the minor arterial, because it's not just this five acres that's doing it. It happens to, may happen to be the straw that breaks the camel's back, but, you know, there's potentially thousands of users that would use this. So we would see minor arterial improvements as a city project. That being said, if the city wanted to, we can always at any time play the safety card on any development and say, until the sidewalk is in, this can't be supported, and, and play that card.
I mean, we have to be able to justify.
But we have to be able to justify, yes.
Yeah, and have traffic warrants and be able to say something, because when you say, just play the safety card, sounds like a lawsuit to me.
Yeah, when I, when I say play the safety card.
Developers have rights to.
Well, it's more a matter of implementing our existing standards and, and code and requirements, that using those trigger elements to trigger that.
Yeah, fully.
Not, not an arbitrary or capricious decision in any way to implement that.
Yeah, to make sure that.
More of a interpretation and utilization of our standards to implement that a little bit earlier rather than later.
Correct, yeah, and that's, just to make sure Stephen knows I'm not going real gas. So playing the safety card would be based on a traffic study that says, stamped by an engineer that says, this is what's needed to support this development. You know, at that point, it's usually, okay, the city's going to commit to do this, and here's our plan to do that, or this development has to wait. And that's, that happens.
Is it feasible to consider a SID on that frontage, so that at some point in time, they would have to pay for the cost of that sidewalk, if that ever develops through there?
So the SID would be concurrent with development, so that would be if they're, when they come in with a development proposal and they want to defer that obligation. So there's no need for SID at this point, because that obligation currently sits for any development on that land. So if they were to come in tomorrow and want to put really anything on it, the code would require them to do those frontage improvements along their frontage, no matter what. This SID would come in if, at that point, the city says, well, it's only one house, that's not appropriate scale of a improvement to the problem, that that could be deferred through an SID-style platnot, where the city could enforce that at a later date.
I'd point out that we've, we've talked about three different major changes this evening that it was completely different, though doable. I'm not saying we can't do it, but it'd be major changes from how the city is currently and has been developing. And I would proffer that consistency is extremely important to the developers, so they know what to expect. So some of the things we're talking here, like SIDs that we haven't done in 12 years at a minimum.
Correct, we haven't implemented.
Would be kind of a nuclear bomb going off in the development world. Not saying that council can't do it, maybe we should do it, but I think that, it makes me nervous that we're talking about some pretty major changes on a specific project when we don't even have a full council, we don't have the city manager. I think there's just, we have to be careful. I'd be more comfortable tabling it than being, than having some major changes in our development process.
Well, we do have a, we do have a second reading, that we should have all council members present for.
Correct.
But, no, and I, I, I understand, and I don't think, I can't speak for my fellow council members, it's certainly not my intention to change process and procedure, I just think these are questions we need to ask in terms of, I do have a concern about the health, safety, and welfare issue, and I want, if I vote in favor, I want to be convinced that I'm doing the right thing. So I don't think we're looking to change process and procedure, but just to get as much information as possible. That being said, I do have one question, and I know full well in considering a rezon, that we are not to consider what the current applicant's intended use of the property is. However, the cat is out of the bag, and has been stated that his, and this will not affect my decision and how I vote, one way or the other, but I'm just more curious than anything. That, I understand he intends to use, wants a rezoned B four, so he can have a sales office for his residential development. But does the city not allow like a model home to be used as a sales office in a residential development?
It's kind of different, because he's wanting to sell things and use it as commercial property, it wouldn't be allowed in a residential zoning district, and so that's why it has to be B four in order to do sales as well. And so that's the need for the B four, as opposed to just, like you said, using like a model home, you know, to show the homes. He's wanting to do more, kind of like what you see, I think it's similar, I guess I don't know for certain, but similar to like what he has downtown currently, there's the Coker Homes business downtown, and I think he's wanting to do something similar, but at the location where he's actually selling the homes. So, and you're right, I mean, we do know, and he stated in planning commission, you know, that that was his near-term intent, but of course, keeping in mind as well that anything allowed in the B four zoning district would be allowed, so.
Of course. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, if either we feel like we need to put any conditions on, on it, we can do that as part of the motion, if you feel, so.
I don't know that we have any reason based on our code or zoning or our comprehensive plan to give us justification to impose any kind of restrictions.
And, and I, I would agree, and I think that, you know, I think it's been a good discussion, I think staff has been very persuasive in what they've had to say, and I'm prepared to, to either make the motion or second it, and to vote in favor of it, because I really would like the full council to have the opportunity to take another look at it on second reading when it comes back to us.
Okay. If there are any additional questions, I'll open a public hearing. We have no one. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass ordinance 2564 on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item 11 is a Hawk Parkway sidewalk extension construction contract. Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the same, no changes from what we discussed at work session, but I'll give a quick overview for anybody new joining from the public and for the press. So over time, we're always working, speaking of sidewalk extensions, to fill in missing link sidewalks along Townsend. Good examples, we did the big South Townsend extension project, kind of between Walmart and Woodgate Road about four years ago, that was under a C dot grant. We have one budget for 22 also, and then when Hawk Parkway, or the Golden Gate Petroleum site came in on Hawk, intersection of Ogden and Townsend, and that kind of backs up to Hawk Parkway, they put in their frontage improvements along there. So we saw this as a good opportunity to get a twofer, kind of help support their development while filling in a missing link sidewalk. So we're looking to fill in the missing link between where Hawk Parkway left, or where Golden Gate Petroleum left off, just south of Ogden, and going down to Hawk Parkway. Right now, this is kind of a barren, just gravel and grass area that people are having to walk through the mud to get through. So the product was designed by Buckhorn Engineering here in town. We put it out for bid on August 22nd. We received four bids. The low bidder was Agave Construction at 75.9. We, or, yeah, and then I'll, I guess I'll dive into traffic control next. So the product itself will take place along the shoulders, so no closures to any of the through lanes on Townsend, and the product is scheduled to be done by the end of the year. And then the product itself, we budgeted 50,000 for this. Going into the summer, we were seeing that concrete contractors are like unicorns. If you ever see one, please trap it. We'll use it, but they've been hard to get, and with all the construction demand going on, and with that, prices go up. We kind of figured this product would go up, so we held back about 25,000 on some of our other sidewalk projects to, to fund this. They came in right where we thought they would, at the 75, and so with the savings on those other products, we're able to fund this project since it was budgeted, and we've kind of been interacting with Golden Gate Petroleum as they developed, that we would help support this, so we didn't want to go back on that. So with that, that helped facilitate getting this one over the finish line for the year, and happy to answer any questions.
I don't have anything. I'd accept public comments. We have none. In that case, I would take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award a contract to Agave Construction in the amount of $75,900 for construction of the Hawk Parkway sidewalk extension project as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Any staff reports?
Sorry, we're just commenting on how expensive sidewalks are.
And what it would mean for Ogden if this was 75,000 bought you 500 feet.
Even though we do this every day, sometimes it's still like, just, it's expensive.
I hear you.
You have expensive projects. I wondered if you'd like an update on the amphitheater project, given that we have the opening this Saturday, Jim's here, and he has, he has some information, might not be new to you, but some of our audience might, might care to know this information, so if that's all right with you. Jim, thank you.
Yes, Jim.
Hello, I have some schedule of events for the amphitheater for you. Several of the events you guys know about, ribbon cutting later this week, council, of course, invited to that, and Rotary Clubs and everybody will be involved in that process. William Woody with City will be filming that and kind of finishing off his video of the amphitheater project. So we've been, we've had time-lapse video out there throughout the project, we did several drone footage flyovers before the project, so he's working on that along with the ribbon cutting event, kind of completing that video, and it'll be really, really good. So I think that, he'll kind of put the final touches on that right after the ribbon cutting event, so look for that, he'll put it out on social media, and so anyway, keep your eyes out for that video. And then after ribbon cutting, Oktoberfest this Saturday, and then Striker, after the event, Striker will finish out some completion items in the building. It's fully functional in the way it is right now, but they are completing some small items, so punchless items are being completed at this time. So even during the ribbon cutting, if, you know, there's fresh floor finish in some areas of the building we can't walk on, or things like that, it's because they're, they're finishing the project, they're putting the, the last touches on it, and kind of hitting the last few punchless items, so. But without answering any questions if you have any, but otherwise, I'll, I'll see you on Thursday.
None, but we're looking forward to.
Absolutely. Thank you guys for staying after it. Looking great.
And council, this isn't news to you, but I'll just remind everyone else that Oktoberfest just happens to be the first event at the amphitheater. It's a fundraiser for All Points Transit, it's not a city event, but there will be many free events at the amphitheater in the future. This one is ticketed, since it's a fundraiser, but we look forward to next spring, when the weather's nice again, having free events. Other organizers will be having free events, and so I don't want anyone in the public to, to think that this will only be a ticketed venue in the future.
But I would like to point out also that if music purveyors and event promoters want to coordinate with the city, that this is a park asset, and as such, that if somebody wants to rent that to have a concert, they can certainly contact us to do that.
Absolutely, and that can be ticketed or not, so we're, we're open to everything, all kinds of events, and we have a team at the city that's been working really hard to put together that rental process, and the fees associated with that, and City Council, you will see the fees for the amphitheater come forward as part of the fee resolution that you adopt at the next council meeting.
And who would they need to contact if they want to rent the facility?
For now, I would recommend that they reach out to Lisa Del Piccolo, surprise, Lisa, in order to learn just the basics of renting the space, and until we have our formal application ready, I think Lisa's the best contact, and we're working through some staff transitions as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Not from me, any other staff in the room? Yes, Chief Hall, please.
I do have two things that I wanted to discuss with you tonight. I mentioned it in work session, but we are but we are still looking for that gunmetal gray Jeep Wrangler that we suspect the driver occupants were involved in several pellet gun shooting incidents, to include shooting a juvenile in the stomach. And so that was addressed recently in Crime Stoppers, and that number is 970-249-8500. So if you have information, I'd like to just ask the public to please contact Crime Stoppers. You can remain anonymous. Give your information, and we really would like that information, because I know that there are individuals out there that probably have information that they could give us. Secondly, I'd like to commend two of our police officers. Last week, we had a pretty harrowing incident. I didn't start out harrowing, we ended up making an arrest. These officers were Officer Jamie Kent and Cameron Pencil. And you can go through your entire police career and you hope that this never happens to you, but in this particular case, the officers were transporting a suspect to the Montrose County Jail when that individual became unresponsive in the backseat of their patrol car. And of course, now we have body worn cameras, and the officers, one, recognized that there was an issue and immediately pulled over, called for medical assistance. Got the suspect out of the back of the vehicle, and watching the body camera, it's amazing to see how calm they remained. The individual did not have a pulse, and so they immediately unhandcuffed the individual and began CPR on the side of the roadway. Immediately was able to get that individual back, and talking with one of the officers, you know, he kind of reaffirmed those comments. You want to go through your whole career and never have that happen, as you're standing there looking at that happening, you're just, you can't believe it's happening. And that said, they were very calm, very directive, and performed those life-saving efforts and got that individual back. So that's Officer Cameron Pencil and Jamie Kent with our department, and they're, they're great guys, and we really do have an awesome department. So I wanted to let you guys know that.
That's great, and I think that just goes along with the fine trading the folks are getting and what a good job they're doing on their follow-ups too.
Yeah, no, they're, they're good people. We have, once again, we have a great department, so, thank you.
All right. Any other staff? Counsel, do you have any comments? Pardon? Then I'll take a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks, staff.